Have a gold copy that you're looking at there.
I probably do, yeah.
These are numbered one through eight.
These are numbered one through eight.
Okay, I do have it all.
So, the other thing that I would like to call your attention to, as you look at it, is at the bottom of each page you will notice, evidence provided to support the evaluation. If we're going to be asking superintendent to at least mention what evidence supports, what I think it's the same standards we need to apply to ourselves. And so, that will also help us define the goals for next year.
Right. So, it truly is cyclical, is the point. And I'm gonna agree with Bruce that if we have comments or changes, I would like to get them to you by Wednesday.
I love it.
So that you could then send the document back out to us. And I want to impose a deadline date for us because then we need to go into the coalition and come out with a summary statement, just like we did with the superintendent. So, have you thought about that timeline at all? Or anybody have a comment about that?
We get comments by Wednesday, it will be back out to you by Friday. And then, you know, a week to complete it. At that point, I think if everybody sends their comments in, we can take a look at how we can bring it all together and tease out the relevant comments in each one. Of course, everybody will be able to add their own personal comments if they agree or not, for some reason we provide.
Nick, does this format expand if we become as verbose as I usually do?
Well, we expect you to edit your comments, please.
Well, so in other words, the box is it, that's it, huh?
No, no, we keep it in place.
Good.
It's a Word document, so it can go anywhere, it's gonna run over to other pages.
Terrific.
Page numeration is set in the footer, so that'll move as you go.
I've only got seven pages of A.
I know.
Okay.
It's actually...
So you'll fix it.
The A is the last page that says draft, and it was one of these formatting things Microsoft likes to do.
This is my page for comments.
It's impossible for me to get rid of an extra page in some of the documents.
Right, okay.
So, I didn't want to take a whole bunch of my time earlier this morning to try to figure it out.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything, that's all, that's all.
There's seven pages, and the first page is the title page.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you talked about this at the last meeting when I was in here, and I apologize if I'm... I didn't see things when I read the minutes about this either, so I just have a couple of questions. So, you created each of the four standards and identified the headings. Are those headings that are standard in all school committee evaluations?
We don't know what other school committees are doing at this point.
Where did this come from?
This comes from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Had a... had one version that we looked at. And then we took a look at what we had used for the superintendent. And took a look at some of those things to create these, or to modify them based on what we have for the superintendent. And they're pretty consistent with... that's right.
This is the document that we got from the Mass Association of School Committees. This is the document that we have used in the past. It was... a suggestion was made by Mr. Decanter at our last meeting that we wanted to format it more like the teacher and the superintendent's evaluations. So, we wanted everything to kind of look the same, and I think Angela, that was your suggestion to us as well. So, it was all developed, they just did a different format that matches the state, and then tweaked where we felt we wanted to get additional information about ourselves.
But we...
In the standards, like A through E, you tweaked some of those?
We took... exactly. And the standards, and those different A through Es, or A through F, whatever it is on each page, we took a look at what was in MASS. We took a look at what was in the superintendent's listing. And we said, where do we share responsibility with the superintendent? Where do we not share responsibility with the superintendent? Went back and say, where are the gaps?
There are standards that don't exist in any of the state evaluations.
It's similar to what we did with the superintendent's evaluation, we pulled things out, so I... Thank you very much, really nice work, I appreciate it.
It is unbelievable.
Really nice work, right?
But we owe the gentlemen back our comments, and so we are all familiar with it, and we're...
Particularly with the gaps, there's some things that we know are included sort of in the category, but you may want to tease them out or call them out. So if you feel there's a gap, let us know, and then we can either come back and say, "Well, we thought that was included in, you know, point..." Or C. And either you can agree with us, or you can ask us to tease it out further. We will do that.
Or you can also have us write a comment instead of changing something, if only one person brings that up.
But, yeah.
We want to be... put together a tool that everybody's comfortable using. And most importantly, we felt sticking with the MASS thing as we got into it, it was almost a checkless approach that didn't encourage a lot of thought. And we felt that this is a very important time to be thoughtful about our self-evaluation. And so, hopefully this will... will help us do that.
You know, it will evolve. I mean, we've been all... you know, in the time I've been here, we've gone all the way from using MASS to creating our own, to adapting others. And I think that there's something, I think, that's gonna be very useful to the school system, to the district, to have us all looking at the same sort of broad categories in which we're engaging in this conversation. So, I expect, you know, in five years, this may look differently, there may be different sets of standards. You know, there'll be standards about, you know, are we working with our long-range plan, which we don't have right now. You know, so this will evolve, I think, over time.
It's strategic planning.
But again, I feel very good about the evaluation system that's been developed by the state, or adopted by the state, I should say. And we thought aligning it now is the way to go.
Yep. And it's fluid, so as things change at the state level, we can change with them and reflect that, so... Thank you so much.
Wish I worked the other way.
Job well done. Job well done. We had a couple of school committee members attend some meetings around the state this month. And two of them were on very timely topics. One of them is the Common Core. So, I'm gonna ask Audrey to report back, she attended that meeting. I'm gonna ask Mr. Lukens to take the lead on the Chapter 70 reform meeting, because you attended that meeting. The purpose is for us, as a committee, to be up to date on what is happening on... With topics that we are involved in at the state level. We are a system who has adopted the Common Core, that's a Massachusetts state law. And we are carrying out that law. But as some of you may know, there is a group of people that are meeting to talk about the future of the Common Core. So, Ms. McCarthy went to that meeting. She's gonna report out what happened at the meeting. And I'm gonna let you make your statement.
So, first of all, I wanted to inform everyone that I have filed 23B... 23B3 with the city clerk to dispel any appearance of a conflict of interest in my attendance and participation in some of the Common Core forums I've gone to and conferences. I am well aware that the state of Massachusetts has adopted the Common Core, and I certainly support our administration and our teachers in implementing that Common Core. But what I did put together, following those two events, was just some points that I found I took notes on. Maybe, probably, very much the same of what you would have come back with if you had attended, kind of as a takeaway. I didn't put anything on this paper, I did not double-check. I didn't do a whole lot of research on each individual point, but I did make sure that it wasn't a statement that came out of nowhere. So I will hand these out, because I know you all know how to read. I hate being read to at these meetings. So, you know, just look at it and just kind of give you an overview of what people are talking about, some of the concerns that people have with the Common Core. What I did with the document is I tried to put the Common Core piece at the top, and a little bit about PARC at the bottom. Knowing that the Common Core is the standard, PARC is the test, they do align. And, you know, I just encourage anyone who's interested to research where Common Core is headed, where we're stated... where we're headed, and where our country's headed. Different states are doing different things, so I will leave this with you guys to read at your leisure.
Thank you. Let's move on now to the meeting that Mr. Lukens, Mr. Menon, and Mr. Decanter attended on the Chapter 70 funding. And Mike, could you start out just a little bit of what Chapter 70 is?
Sure, and Mayor Holliday was there as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, issue work, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
A lot of our city council members were there too, so this is an issue that people are very interested in. So can you just frame that background a little bit, or maybe, you know?
Sure, so I'll provide an update, and then members Menon, Decanter, and Holliday can fill in the gaps where I've left out critical information. But Chapter 70 is the law under which schools in Massachusetts are funded, and a coalition has been brought together, led by Dave Horaski, who's an Amesbury resident, as well as J.I. Neeny, who's the president of the Newburyport Education Foundation, a Newburyport resident. On September 23rd, this newly-formed coalition met for the first time. And the point of that meeting was to gather representatives from several North Shore communities and provide an overview of the objectives of the coalition going forward, to start to gain support for the coalition's work. So Dave Horaski sent out a very helpful one-page summary of the meetings. I've sent that out before the meeting at the end of last week, so I'll summarize that, since many of you don't have that document available to you right now. And as I said, as I'm going through this, please feel free to fill in the gaps, those of you that were there at the meeting. So, on the 23rd, approximately 60 people attended. Most of the people in the audience, actually, I shouldn't say most, many of the people in the audience, I wouldn't be surprised if it's most, were officials of some kind, either school committee members, city councilors, mayors, state representatives, and other state officials. We met in Ipswich that night, and the coalition has put together mission statements. I'll read the mission statement for you. "The mission of the Coalition for Chapter 70 Reform, which will continue the work of the North Shore Coalition for School Funding, is to work as partners with the state political process in order to reform the K-12 funding structure in the state of Massachusetts, providing local municipalities and regional K-12 schools the financial support to meet the mandated requirements of the state on a consistent basis, so as to maintain an outstanding quality of education for all school districts." Two primary objectives were outlined. The first is to advocate for legislation that will allow for additional sources of funding in three areas. The first is Chapter 70 Review Commission. So participating in the coalition in the review committees, as prescribed by state statute, that would allow for reasonable changes in the formula that do not change the original intent of the law. Suburban and non-urban communities in Massachusetts, including Newburyport, as far as I'm concerned, are often hurt by the Chapter 70 funding formula. And the intent of this coalition is to address some of the inadequacies with Chapter 70 funding as they impact suburban school districts. Number two is special education and special education transportation reimbursement legislation, which is separate from Chapter 70. And number three is protection of school budgets during economic downturns by earmarking state rainy day funds. So, those are three points that are captured within the first objective, in terms of advocating for legislative change. In order to best accomplish that objective, a second objective was outlined. And that objective is to grow aggressively the coalition as broadly as possible in order to lobby for change in the legislation. So it goes on to outline some additional steps that will be taken from here on out in organizing a committee. The hope is that committee will include representation from as many communities as possible, not just suburban communities in the North Shore, but across the state. Communities that share some of the concerns that we have in Newburyport around Chapter 70 funding. And a second meeting date has not been set, as far as I know, although updates will be given on a Facebook page that Dave and Jay and others have set up. So, we can continue to... Everyone is certainly encouraged to become a part of the coalition, or to stay up to date with the coalition's work. We can continue to update the school committee on the coalition's work in the future.
Nick?
Yeah, I would just like to add a couple of things that are really dating back to the North Shore Coalition for School Funding, which Newburyport is a founding member of and a participant in. The... one of the things that we are also taking a look at is the legalities of Chapter 70. And if it in any way runs in violation of the law, we've done some research on that. We've got some papers on it, and there's some questions. But to proceed with a suit on that, at this point in time, would not be possible unless we get a lot of communities supporting us financially in order to be able to bring a suit. I think I would like to point out that Newburyport has been very, very active and proud of the participation of the city. Dr. Orlando was there as a private citizen. And we had probably the best representation, a lot of city councilors. So I am very excited that we're moving ahead with these initiatives. And I think we should also thank in particular Senator Tarr, who's done a great amount of work with the coalition, and now with this new group. And Representative Brad Hill also has done a great job. Absolutely both of them have been steadfast, and we're thrilled with the work that our Senator Ives has done, in terms of the whole special education piece of that, and the coalition's ability around that. So, I think we have got a lot of people who are willing to step up and do the lobbying and do the pushing that we need. We've got people in the legislature who are willing to hear for us the tide is down. We've got to take advantage of all of this coming together. Along with an economic upturn, slight economic upturn, which makes it slightly easier for people to swallow what another year's they might not have been willing to swallow.
Thank you. Mayor?
I just wanted to add to that, to what Mike and Nick had said, that it's also a very important time because of the FY15 state budget that has put together funding for an ad hoc committee that will be looking at Chapter 70. So the timing is perfect for us to come together, whether it's across Maricopa Valley in the North Shore, or broader, where we can, you know, work on specific objectives and goals to bring back to this legislative committee to begin to try and make changes on what has been this antiquated and difficult formula that has inadequately funded our schools for far too many years.
Thank you for that. Any... I'm sorry, Mr. Menon?
Sure. I would just add a couple more things. One is that we've talked about a strong showing from Newburyport, and in fact, there was a majority of the city council there and a majority of the school committee sitting in the room to have that conversation. The Chapter 70 Review Commission, they do anticipate that there are gonna be hearings all across the state, and we're gonna try to organize to get involved with those. And I think that it was encouraging, I know we did a lot of work. There is available, and certainly people can get in touch with us. It's been circulated to us, the documentation that they... That the group that Nick was involved with prior to this produced. They've looked at several legal theories about whether or not, in fact, the state formula is equitable and fair, and they think they actually may have a legal structure under which to challenge it. We'll see. But again, that's something that's sort of down the road. Right now, we've got... we have an opportunity, I think, to have a significant impact. This Chapter 70 Review Commission is actually... is an ad hoc committee. It is not a committee of the legislature, which the previous one was. And I think we're still waiting for that report, it's been six or seven years.
Part of Chapter 70 calls for annual reviews, and we haven't had one yet.
Since 93.
Well, they... but Senator Tarr said they received one, but it was atrocious. It was basically just some numbers about who was in funding, into which school district, without any kind of assessment or analysis, or... I mean, it was absolutely inadequate, and that's why they moved forward with what they did this year, so... Can we post this anywhere, or is this... this is the legal document... document?
I think we should just ask them. I mean, they circulated it to those of us on the committee, my assumption is that it's now...
Yeah, and when we asked that question, she said she thought that we could post it, but she...
We'll get it confirmed if we can.
But I think that we should widely disseminate this document if we can. It's a very interesting reading.
It is, it is.
Find out if it's copyrighted.
It was a position paper by the board that we hired, so it's just a question about whether...
Who's "we"?
The North Shore Coalition for School Funding.
Right. And so, it's already been shared with everyone that was at the meeting, that shared their email address that night, so...
I would think, but I still would like us to clarify.
Clarify whether it's shareable in an open and public way.
Okay.
But, you know, again, it looked at a number of different legal theories, and then ultimately settled on one that they thought might be worth looking at.
So, Mr. Lukens, is the only way we can keep up is Facebook?
Well, I think it behooves the school committee to become actively involved in the coalition going forward. I haven't had any conversations with other members in terms of interest or availability to stay involved, but I think, you know, as many people in the school committee that can stay involved should. I will stay involved to the best of my ability, but I think that we should...
I think both Nick and I have agreed as well.
I think we should put some structure on this, and I think we should probably cover this, you know, potentially in finance.
The one thing I would say was that when we had joined Ed, Allison Hardquist thought there was a meeting coming up on October 8th. She had one set for the North Shore, but she doesn't...
Well, that's a different organization. That's a suburban coalition.
Okay.
Which is also looking at some of the same issues. That's one of the things that I think we'll find the challenge here, is that there aren't a lot of small organizations... And that's, in fact, Senator Tarr talked to that point, that a lot of small organizations each try to do their own piece of it, in terms of what they think might benefit them the most, but there's never been a central agreement to themes and objectives that we're beginning to see out of this group. And we hope we consult with more communities to make it the driving force behind change.
And could I ask you what communities are involved, so in... Because this is the North Shore Coalition for Chapter 70 Reform, so...
Representatives from Ipswich, Topsfield, Newburyport, Amesbury, Manchester.
Hamilton, where?
I think there was some from Hamilton.
Yeah, there was somebody there from Hamilton. Then we have representatives from other districts, other than...
No, I understand that, but the coalition members are made up of North Shore...
Right now, it's North Shore.
...school communities, yes, okay, okay.
Which is different from the suburban coalition.
Well, that's why I'm trying to clarify, so that, you know...
There are three different groups here that have coalition in state, so that's why it's...
I mean, there were state representatives and state senators from Gloucester, Beverly, Salem, Tebby, the rest of the North Shore.
Yeah.
All right, so, and then I just want to go back to Common Core for one minute. Angela, you gave us a document at our previous meeting. Did you bring copies for everyone? So, this you can find on the DOE website, but it's 10 frequently asked questions about the Common Core State Standards and PARC.
I know.
I bet if you just typed in...
D-E-S-E, Common Core.
Right. But I, you know, I just think there's some confusion out there in what the difference is between Common Core and PARC. And can you just talk about that for a minute?
Well, the Common Core are standards that have been set across multiple states. They're learning standards in the area of English Language Arts and Math. And the literacy standards cross over into Social Studies and Science as well, as far as the literacy aspect of teaching those content areas. And PARC is an assessment, one of two assessments that are... That have been built that align to the Common Core standards.
And as you know, we chose to stay with the MCAS for this year and not go with PARC. So these are just updates that we want to share with the community and the schools. We're out and about, we're attending meetings, we're trying to find and learn as much information as possible to make really good decisions for our children. Ms. McCarthy?
Can I just ask you a question about Angela's...
Sure.
Are we currently teaching, like, Social Studies and Science in our K through three? Or have we integrated that into the Language Arts?
No, we do have... we have separate blocks in the schedule for teaching Science and Social Studies. Some of the reading that's being done for those content areas is being done in the literacy block, because as you know, we've talked about several times here, that there's been an increase in informational text in the standards. So, teachers are integrating the reading of Social Studies and Science during reading class when they're working on informational text. And then able to do more application and hands-on work around that, particularly in the area of science during the scheduled science block.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on now. We have a set of proposed goals, and I'm gonna ask the superintendent to take over and talk a little bit about the history and how you got to these.
Even though Mr. Decanter and I did not rehearse this tonight, what you're going to see is that the same areas for goals are the same areas that you have in the school committee evaluation, and that are also in my evaluation.
Which is great.
Which...
First time you heard.
Well, we're trying here.
So, we have picked five different areas: Curriculum Assessment, Family and Community, Professional Culture, Teaching All Students, and Management and Operations. And I vetted these with the leadership team last week. And while we're all in agreement that there are too many goals, we felt that we needed to bring forward these... whoops, these seven goals.
Your five, forget it.
These seven goals, and I'm not going to... I'm just gonna briefly go over each one. You know that we are working on professional development and the use of district-determined measures. We obviously want to continue to develop and implement rigorous curricula that's aligned to state and federal standards. We certainly want to improve communication within the district and with parents and community via our new school district website, which we hope will be up and running by the end of the month. I can tell you, there's a lot of work going on in the background right now. Kathy and I were on there for a little bit today, and we could see that there were four different people who were actually working on it and making changes to... So, all that is happening in the background right now, and we hope by the end of the month to really launch it. Professional culture, we really want to have some intentional dialogue among school staff, as well as with parents and with the community, focused on what the community of Newburyport and what the staff of Newburyport would like our professional culture to be. In terms of teaching all of our students, we certainly want to focus on developing, strengthening the district's capabilities for developing and implementing special education services. for developing and implementing special education services through improved IEP development and the development of the specialized centers, the curriculum that goes along with all of our specialized centers. Also, we know that we are currently providing professional development in the area of technology. As you know, we have added a lot of technology to the district. It is not all deployed and all up and running yet, but that will be ongoing, and that's really focused on pre-K through H. And then also to create a timeline and process to develop a comprehensive strategic plan that we'll start working on in January, and with full implementation to occur in fifteen, sixteen. And I fully expect that that should be the development of a five-year plan. You notice that I put draft on these because I wanted to get input from the school committee as well. So, those were the areas that the leadership team felt we needed to focus on, and they do tie into our evaluation system as well.
Comments? Mr. Mannan?
Yeah, I appreciate that this is a draft, and I would have preferred, actually, and just in hectic, I would prefer to have gotten these to you. But I did have some thoughts on some of these. I don't know if now is appropriate, if you want me to share them now. I'm really pleased to see how they're broken out. I'm really pleased to see how many there are, although I agree it's ambitious. And I don't want my comments to be taken in the spirit of making them even more ambitious, but just sort of clarifying them, I hope. For item number three, where it says improved communication, it would be, I think, really useful for me, and I think for the community itself, to define communication, to just tease that out a little bit. Obviously, to me, I mean, I remember when I first joined the school committee fourteen years ago, our communication committee's primary focus for that year was getting out two newsletters, which was one-way communication. So, I think for me, to hear just a little bit about what communication means in this context would be really useful. I'm really encouraged, and, you know, one of the reasons that we were so impressed with you during your application process here had to do with the ethical, core ethical values that you developed in your school system. And I'm really encouraged to see that we're going to begin that process. And while I would love to see more details about how that's going to begin, I understand that this is an overarching goal and that will evolve. For the part about teaching all students, I had some thoughts. One is that in addition to sort of IEPs, we have another level of obligation for students with 504 plans, and I would like to see that, that at least talked about. And the other thing that we've talked about in the past is that there are, there are aspects of kids as they're developing that if we were, you know, I'm thinking, we've had a number of conversations about executive function stuff with kids, that if we were teaching everybody at the elementary school level, regardless of whether they have special needs, if we were instituting some workaround executive function for all of those kids, for every kid, we're not singling kids out. We're giving everybody a structure in which they can learn how to study, how to, how to manage assignments. I really believe that if we're doing that with every kid, regardless, at that level, we're going to have a lot less problems as they move through the system. I know we've talked about this before.
Angela, excuse me for a minute. What is the D cap? Is it D cap? Is that, D cap is the, I was. Yes, thank you. I was at a meeting this morning with the team coordinators and with Dr. Day, and that's one of the things that we talked about for the next leadership agenda, to really look at our, our D cap, and, because it hasn't been updated in a really long time, and it needs to be updated, and it gets exactly at what you're talking about.
So, that would, that I would really be encouraged with. And then, under operations, management and operations, I know we're investing a lot in a strategic plan and even beginning it in January, but I think that there, you know, there are some conversations that I would like to see us beginning sooner than that, that have to do with that strategic plan. You know, we've been sort of coming to the gradual realization that our high school is overcrowded and that we don't have space to do a lot of the things that we want to do, never mind even the resources. We don't have classroom space, and that we've actually begun to offer, outside of the school day, we've begun to offer credit-bearing classes for high school students. I think that's a great idea. We've, we were involved for a while while there was state funding available to study expanded school day. These are some of the things that I'm really hoping that we're having, are going to be part of the strategic planning conversation. But I want to see that we have these conversations, both here at the school committee and as part of the strategic planning process. So, that, that under, that's under management operations. Again, I love the way that it's laid out. I think that you have come up with very, probably the most significant kinds of goals that we could have for each of these areas. So, I offer that in the spirit, again, not complicating it, but.
One of the things that we talked about, just to come back to your comment about defining communication, we talked about that at leadership team, and one of the things that I said that when you roll out a new website, what keeps people coming back is that the content is fresh. So, we talked about what's reasonable for, you know, I will be coming, I will be sending information out sometimes on a daily, but for sure on a weekly basis, updating parents and community, and that that's really what I'm looking, the standard that I expect to hold principles to, to keep new information coming out. We will have some, you know, we'll be doing some surveys. There's a number of things that we'll be able to do in terms of being able to have sort of two-way communication, which is what you're getting at, I think. And that doesn't mean we're not going to still continue to do, whether it's newsletters, you know, and some of the things that we also have done. But the school committee will have a, you know, you'll have your own page. There are some ways for you to be interactive. So, I think that this will get at some of what you're talking about regarding communication.
One of the other things that I would just add is that, you know, these are district goals, and one of the things we were trying to be careful about was making these specific yet broad enough that all the schools then could find their place within that goal, and then teachers could find their place within the school goal. So, if they seem a little broad, that was intentional. We tried to get specific enough that everybody would understand the focus of it, but broad enough that it could build.
And we want to have a through line from the district goals all the way down to the teacher level. I mean, I think that's really important to be able to do that. And now, given the way in which the school committee, the evaluation ties in, I think it's, I think it's going to be seamless. I'm really.
And please, Bruce, Susan and I talked about this a little bit, and what will happen with these goals is her evaluation committee will work with her on action steps under each of these, which will become part of her evaluation, which we will bring back to the full committee so that everybody's up to date on what our expectations are and what the action plan is. And, you know, perhaps you can talk at that point a little bit about what's happening in the schools vis-à-vis these. So, it, everything's tying together really nicely. I really think, you know, we're on the right page. We're moving in the right direction and we're synthesized. So, it's just, I hope it's going to make life easier. And I too appreciate these. I do think you've taken on a lot of goals. Usually, we do three or four. Is this a needs assessment?
Well, this, you know, it was interesting because I went back to my entry plan, and all of these ties right, tie right back to my entry plan of what had, what I had observed and what I thought we needed to be working on, and I could go back and find a link there. So, and again, I mean, I think that some of these will be more of a focus than others, yes.
Okay.
And just like you do with my evaluation, where you're identifying specific areas that I will be held accountable for, I think that as we move throughout the year and as you look at these and make decisions around them, I think that we'll be able to identify which ones are going to be done in their entirety and which ones maybe only a piece of them is going to be completed, so.
And we'll report that out from our subcommittee meeting every time we make that kind of a determination and bring it back to you so that you'll be kept up to date at least monthly, as opposed to all of it in the end. Because I think some of us found that a little overwhelming too. So, we're trying to keep this cycle moving and revisiting it and to make sure we're all moving in the right direction. So, for me, it would be important when we get to the, you know, the feedback stage after, after the subcommittee is met again, to get input from all of you to make sure that we're on the right track from the very beginning. So, any other comment or statement or? So, we don't need to vote on these, but are you going to just take draft off or?
I think what, well, I wanted you to have an opportunity to provide me with some additional feedback, and I want to give you that opportunity. I would ask that maybe at the next school committee meeting that we vote on them.
Okay.
Because I would like to be able to say to the staff, these are definitely the goals. These will be our district goals for this year, so.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Do you, can I just ask, do you have some perceived way to measure these things? Like, for instance, improved communication within the district and parents by community by two thousand and fifteen by the school district website? I know that you can say, okay, well, we're going to update the website, but do you have some specific ways to quantify any of this? So that you can show growth in future years?
Yes, and I think that we're also working on developing those action steps right now and what those will look like. So, they're not fully fleshed out yet, which is another reason why I would like two more weeks to see about some.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be helpful to see some of those things.
Yes.
And maybe we can have a subcommittee meeting before our next school committee meeting so that we can move it one step further if that's appropriate. And thank you. I'm going to leave this with you because the superintendent's report is the next thing on our agenda.
I wanted to just provide some information to the school committee on follow-up after we had the lockdown. I wanted you to be aware that there was a question-and-answer period for parents that was offered to parents at the open house from five-thirty to six-fifteen. It was very, very well-attended, where parents had an opportunity to ask questions and where Mr. Parent, Mr. Testa had an opportunity to share some of the facts. They also had grade-level meetings on Monday, the fifteenth, that were, that ranged from twenty to thirty minutes. And really, it was just, you know, parents' expectation today is that, you know, like, the police have somebody who could tweet information out on a regular basis. They have somebody who handles all of their PR. We don't have that, so that when you have the superintendent who's involved in it, I can't get the information out that fast at this point. Now, in the future, we may be able, you know, with a Twitter feed, that may be possible. But that was one of the things that parents were just saying, in this day and age of instant technology, that that would have been appreciated. But I think that it was the flow of information that it wasn't fast enough for parents. So, that was, that was good feedback to get from people and to hear that. But I think it was both the grade-level meetings and the parent meetings. I think people were very pleased with that process and that follow-up. So, I just wanted the school committee to be aware of that as well.
And I just want to add to that. I was at that meeting at the open house, and I think that Mr. Parent and Mr. Testa did a fantastic job presenting information back to the public, and it was, they did a really great job, I think.
Yes. We had a follow-up public safety meeting, which includes, you know, emergency management, police, fire, health department, et cetera, and talked about some of the media concerns and information that came out. And so, we're looking to NIBA to try and establish a, a training for key people across the community, including the schools, where we can work together to figure out how to get that kind of information to the media so it doesn't end up in the situation where we did, where it was really inappropriate, and if it wasn't for the superintendent's work with the superintendent, it would have been a very, very inappropriate headline the next morning. And, you know, since then too, I had a communication with the owner or president, I don't know what his title is, or the executive director of the Eagle Tribune, who's now in charge of the whole paper, and really shared, you know, our concerns about how unconscionable it was, this statement that he made, or that, you know, they were going to use, the headline was up on Google before it hit the, you know, the paper was to be released and was able to report back, but it was just, it was wrong to make that kind of gross statement of it being tied to ISIS and Al Qaeda. You know, that's what the statement would have, you know, email threat tied to at a time when, you know, journalists aren't being beheaded and assassinated, and the president is on, you know, national news talking about, you know, the threats and bomb strikes, when there was absolutely no concrete or direct evidence that that was in fact the case, and all it did was scare people. And so. So, we will continue to work on that, you know, the media response too, which also has to be part of this in terms of getting information out, because it was almost instantaneous. There were helicopters, the media was on site because of how quickly. But you have to be sure you're getting the right information out to the public and to parents.
Thank you.
I sent everyone a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mannan?
Yeah, I just said, I think, I think our experience is, it's important to figure out how you're interfacing with the media. I think that's critical, but thinking we can control what they're going to do, I think, is, that's a very difficult task to take on. And I think part of what we can do is figure out how information gets out. But I also, you know, want to make sure that wherever that information was coming from, that had been dealt with. Because that, wherever they, you know, they didn't make that stuff up out of thin air. Somebody, somebody suggested that to them. So, I want to make sure we're dealing with that. The other thing, and I've talked with the superintendent about this, that, social media being what it is, I had some questions about the way the particular student who was involved was handled. And I'm wondering if we're having a conversation about, about when a student is being charged or, you know, something like that is happening, are we having a conversation about whether or not it is appropriate or a good thing for somebody to be put in handcuffs and walked out to a police car as a student? I was really deeply troubled by that. Social media being what it is, I saw the photographs of it that day on the social media. And I don't, I think you can figure out, you can try to control kids using their phones at Windows, or you can then take a look at what's in the best interest of the student, what promotes their dignity. How do we deal with this in a respectful, responsible way? And I, I'm really hoping we had that conversation, because I found it, I found it personally degrading and appalling that that happened. And I do not, you know, I've had some concerns about those kinds of things as they happen here, and I really want to make sure we're, we're talking about that. Because again, you know, whether or not that student was found innocent or not, that picture was flashed everywhere. And I'm not sure that needed to happen. I think there might have been other ways that would have been respectful, that would have accomplished what we needed to accomplish. And so, how are we having, I mean, where are those conversations taking place? Are they?
Those conversations, I have started those conversations, but those need to take place with our school resource officer.
I agree.
With Marshall Howard and, I think, with the leadership team.
I would just like to make sure that we have those conversations. I'm happy to participate and put in my two cents. But I also would like to get some of that reported back out. I appreciate that.
And just to the first part of your comments, I think, Bruce, the Fusion Center is involved in working on, this is, you know, through the FBI, working backwards in terms of looking at, tracking back through the websites. And I find it interesting that, you know, up late, I mean, granted, there was a direct connection in Swam Scott with the situation where there have been other schools that have been in lockdown because of this. And the email threat talked about that this was, we were going to be the first, the test case in Newburyport because they believed that schools are unsafe. And so, this is, you know, part of what the message was out there to, you know, sort of test our response. And I have to tell you, I am, was very, very, very pleased with the mutual aid, the way everything worked like clockwork, the response of the administrative staff, the way the students managed during all of this, and how routines returned as quickly as possible, the way the superintendent responded. You know, there were little pieces, and we can always do better, but this is why it's important to debrief and to get feedback in terms of how we, how we respond in situations like that.
Audrey?
Yeah, just back to actually what Bruce said, because I too actually saw those pictures before school even let out that day. So I know that we, because we have a school resource that staff and administrators are agents of the police department, I get that. But do it, does that not give us any say in how we, I mean, it's done all the time. I mean, how something happens, how somebody's charged, whatever, happens in different ways, um, whether to, to protect their families or whatever. I feel like there was no consideration given for that. I feel like there was no, let's stop. Here's what we can do and we can, you know, we can do it without all the pictures. I mean, the pictures are never gonna go away. They're never gonna go away. Um, so do we not have control, do you, not we? Do you not have control because we have a school resource and you're an agent of the police or?
There are certain situations where, where the police are going to act the way the police are going to act because that's, that's what they're going to do because of a certain situation and certain variables. However, I think what, to, to Bruce's point, the conversation that needs to happen is around when in fact there is a situation where there's an arrest that's going, that needs to be made. How, how does that happen and how much say can we have in that? I think that's the conversation that we need to have.
And who's guiding that conversation? I guess is my biggest question because I think it will determine which way it goes.
I, I think it's a conversation that needs to happen with the leadership team, with Marshall Howard, with Officer Whitney. And I, I think that we need to talk about other situations in which it's an automatic arrest, cuffs on immediately, out the door. And when there are situations where in fact we can handle it a little bit differently. I mean, I'd like to handle as many of those situations differently as we can. There may be, and, and I guess that's the conversation I wanna have, are, you know, what are those, um, finite? And are there finite situations? There may be.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
I mean, I'm glad it's starting the conversation. I just.
It's an ongoing.
I, I would have thought we would be farther along. That's probably the biggest disappointment that this was done so sixties. It's just, this is like, we're better than us. We're definitely better than us. So it's disappointing, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully it doesn't repeat itself, but hopefully if it does, we can do a little bit better.
You know, I, I'm not gonna speak for the school committee, but please take into those meetings my concerns about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, they're, they're legitimate and. Um, moving on, I sent out a copy of the technology report to everyone and.
It is great.
And, um, looking for feedback and any questions that you may have. Areas you felt might, might have been overlooked. Um, I think that they, you know, from my perspective, I think that they, they have clearly helped to outline a direction that I think that we, we would like to head in. Again, I see this as tying in nicely with our strategic planning as we move forward and professional development, ongoing professional development. And I think that they, and funding, yeah.
Thank you. I was very pleased for the report. I, you know, had covered a tremendous amount of information and was comprehensive, gave us the direction, talked about. I, I particularly appreciated the information about hiring, um, the ITS, um, to, to bring, you know, so it's not fragmented between sort of software hardware fixes and tech, you know, working with teachers and professional development and, and bringing it all together under one group of people, which makes a lot of sense.
Yes. Mr. DeKenter?
Uh, I certainly found this, uh, report to be very interesting and certainly a wonderful beginning, if that's what I would call it. And there's a lot of work that still needs to be done in this area. Hopefully that can happen under the guidance of a, a CIO for our, for our schools, uh, moving forward. But I think there is other information that we should gather, not wait for just to better educate ourselves. In particular, that he said I found lacking was a census of what, uh, students have access to in terms of technologies. We've talked about many times before, but I, I was hoping that that would be part of this report and it wasn't. And I, I understand that there are all sorts of issues as to why not, but I, I just hope, that's why I'm calling it a very good beginning. And I, I'm especially pleased with the, the concept of the CIO. I'm especially pleased with the approach to funding that they recommend there. I think those two are absolutely, uh, critical elements and I'm, I'm very excited about that. But I, I do want to underline that I think we still have a lot of work to do.
Part of, part of, um, this, um, technology report was actually a survey that they put together that was to be administered and we ran out of time at the end of the school year. And then we've had so many technological problems at the beginning of this year, we haven't been able to administer it yet. So once, once, and that is for, that was for both staff and for students. So that, that is coming. So as soon as we, um.
Looking forward to that.
Is, is this, um, like, will you be putting a new position in the budget for this next year?
Well, I certainly, I mean, as we move forward into, uh, budget discussions and budget priorities, this certainly may be, maybe one of them, I mean, might be next year, might be the following year. But I do think that long-term that we want to give this serious consideration.
And, and, and I'm not pushing, please, is there a timeline for, for, for this?
Um, a timeline from the perspective of, I think that, you know, we have to develop a, a technology plan, if you will.
Okay.
We need a five-year plan which should stem from this.
Is, is there a committee working on that? Are you gonna start that or?
Not yet, not yet.
Well, that, I'm just asking what, uh, uh, the next step is, I guess, the action of what, what are you doing with the report?
They're actually using the budget numbers that the school building committee had put aside.
Okay.
For replacement of technology.
These you're talking about, yeah.
So that was what we voted on because of the surplus.
Okay, yeah.
So that's where that money, just to be sure everyone understands, that's where that, but those budget figures are coming from. They weren't just pulled out of the air. They were money that the, you know, the school building committee, uh, actually voted on to carry forward to, for technology.
What would that position give us that we don't have now?
Somebody who can, who can devote their time to making sure that from an educational standpoint that we are integrating technology to a very rigorous degree. And somebody who can oversee that and someone who is always thinking about what the next thing is. And, you know, it's, we have two tech-integrated positions right now. We don't have a position at the high school and we don't have someone to really sort of oversee and coordinate that on a regular basis. And somebody who is, um, just one step ahead. And that's really what we, that's really what we need.
Mr. DeKenter?
For a business with a size budget that we have, that we don't have a chief information officer.
I under, I understand that.
Unconscionable as far as I'm concerned. Uh, I think one of the big things that this person will do is it'll take a holistic look at technology. Uh, technology is becoming and will continue to be a very important part of our budget. And so we can't have someone who is very capable, uh, doing a good job, uh, working on networks and speeds and deeds and.
Understood, hardware and.
Hardware, uh, trying to figure out how am I going to keep everybody abreast of what's happening. And our tech integrators might have a little bit of an idea about what's happening, but most of their work is focused on the now, on the today, you know, let's resolve the issues. And so having that person in there who can take some time, who'll be the forward thinker, who can say, this is a gimmick, this is for real, uh, and here are the reasons. Uh, that's the kind of guidance I think we would, we really benefit from in, uh, in our history.
And the tie-in to communicate, to overall communication as well. I mean, it just makes perfect sense.
Well, it comes up in this a lot, communication and, uh, you know, so. Mr. Lukens?
Yeah, I really appreciated reading through the technology report. I, I look forward to sort of seeing the many iterations of this as it hopefully lives on in the strategic plan, the budget process and everything else. So as I, as I was reading through it, I counted at least ten specific recommendations from it's simple to recommending that the website committee continue to convene and meet to, you know, the establishment of new positions or integration of technology in the curriculum. A lot more, um, a lot more meaty, complex recommendations. So I think one thing that would be really helpful to me in terms of making sure that these recommendations continue to be, um, considered throughout the various planning processes that we plan on undertaking over the next one-plus years would be sort of outlining the recommendations separately, either at the beginning of the report or at the end of the report, um, just to make sure that they're not lost in a larger document like this. So the, the, the accreditation report for the high school is sixty-five pages long, but it had a very nice cover sheet that outlined very clearly the, the commendations and the recommendations for, for, um, what we, what, what they're suggesting that we do going forward. So I, I think there's a really, some really good recommendations in here and some are simple and some are complex. And I think just outlining those separately, um, and making sure that we continue to have visibility in those recommended, recommendations and the next steps with each one would be really important.
I completely agree.
I agree. I think that's a very good idea. Anything else on the technology report? Any other questions? Thank you. You're still up.
Yep. Um, just a reminder that the, um, Mass Mask Joint Conference is in Hines, um, uh, from November fifth through the eighth. I didn't know if any school committee members were planning to attend.
Bruce?
Yeah, um, traditionally, we've done two things. We've volunteered somebody to go, um, or somebody has volunteered to go. But if we are gonna be attending, what we usually do is review the, um, recommendations, the resolutions, and vote on them to send, um, some direction to where this is going. Steve and I have sort of alternated over the years, although Steve has done it mostly the last couple of years. One of the, um, one of the suggestions that came out of the chapter seventy meeting was that that might be an opportunity to get down there and talk to some folks in other suburban communities about the movement that's coming together. So with that, with that in mind, um, if Steve doesn't volunteer, um, I might be interested in going down there at least for a day to participate.
I haven't thought about, um, whether I can go or not, but I'll, I'll give some thought over the next week and let you know.
Do we, uh, is there a fee?
Yeah.
Can I, how do we usually pay for that?
This comes out of our budget.
Purchase order.
Okay, okay. And, oh, you, you attend a day?
Yeah, I mean, I might, I could down there for three days or go overnight. Maybe, it depends on what my time is and what, you know, what the agenda looks like.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I, I thought it was, I thought it was a good idea that, that it, it might be a really good time to have some conversations with folks down there.
All right. Could you, anybody let me know what they would like to do or?
Yeah, I'll let you know in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
And a couple of other things and a couple that we're on, uh, that I just wanna inform you of. I wanna make you aware, um, that we have, um, we put together a pro, a high school and our health, health folks and our nurses have put together a program, um, that is an evidence-based suicide prevention, a program. And I wanna just give you a little bit of history about this so that you can understand. In, in looking at some of the data that, um, that we had, we had, um, some of our students report feeling sad and lonely every day for at least two weeks. And, um, also that some of our students had reported, and this was, uh, grade seven and then nine through twelve, that they had considered suicide in the past year. And for youth between the ages of ten and twenty-four, suicide is the third leading cause of death. And the, the Signs of Suicide Program is a, is a proven successful program. And, um, it increases the, the help that's being sought by students concerned about themselves or a friend and it gives students some tools to use. And the goal is to help our students of seventh and ninth grade and their families understand that depression is a treatable illness, to help them assess whether or not they may have symptoms consistent with depression, to get, um, students to understand that suicide is a preventable tragedy that often occurs as a result of untreated depression and to provide students training in how to identify serious depression and potential, um, um, suicide ideation in a friend and to impress upon our students that they can help themselves in a friend by taking the simple step of talking to a responsible adult about their concerns. And the program components are linkages with local mental health providers, training of both our middle and high school staff in depression and suicide recognition, and developing policies and procedures for staff concerning handling students who are in a crisis situation. We will be looking for, uh, parent education nights for seventh and ninth grade parents and passive consent for parents via a letter prior to training. Parents do have the option. They can opt out. They don't want their child to participate in this. Training and screening, not diagnosing, but training and screening seventh and ninth grade students. And then an additional, um, program for seniors in the spring of fifteen, and that is currently in development, uh, right now. The middle school grade parent night is, uh, going to be October twenty-second with student training on November fifth. The high school parent night is going to be December third with training on December ninth, tenth, and sixteenth. And all of the middle and high school support staff, which is counselors, health teachers, nurses and administrators have been involved in the planning of this for a whole, for the past year and have really done just an amazing job. And there are, um, a couple of, I just brought them here, a couple of DVDs that, uh, one is for adults and one is for, uh, the students. But I think that this is an often under-recognized area of mental health that where we can truly make a difference. And eventually, um, you know, we could, we could expand this. But for our staff, we had twenty-five of our staff who actually participated in training. And it's a, it's a very, very nice, um, uh, and let me just tell you about some of the people who participated. School psychologists, adjustment counselors, as I said, nurses, uh, wellness teachers. We also had administrators. We had our guidance department, um, our student, uh, support personnel. And I think that was everybody who participated. But this is also, our staff can earn graduate credits through Leslie University for participating in this. And there are actually, uh, four different, uh, graduate level courses that they can take, but the cost of the course is only two hundred and fifty dollars, which is amazing for graduate level credit. And they participated over the summer. And, um, and heard very, very good feedback about this. But I, I'm, I'm really pleased that we are, are heading in this direction. And I, I think that it's something that we certainly, I wanted you to be aware of, but I, I think it is, the more that we can do in the mental health area, the better it is. I think that some of what you saw walking in tonight.
But the more, no, it just, it's.
The chalk that was on the sidewalk, so. But I think that this is a way to empower students, to help one another. And I think it sends a great message and it really is about developing the kind of culture where kids feel safe and they feel like they have a trusted adult that they can talk with. So, and this is one more way to move us in, in that direction.
Are, how are you getting that information out to parents?
Um, there's a whole packet that goes out to parents.
Okay.
So that the schools are handling.
Okay. I would like one as a school committee member, just so I understand.
I'd be happy to send that out.
Would anyone else want?
I'll send it out, I'll send out different.
I, I think that'd be a great, um, and is, it's here, right? Did you say?
Yeah, the training's here.
Yep. And how long is the training?
Um, we have several different sessions and then there's follow-up classes that the teachers can participate in for the graduate credit. So I know that we've had, we did some spring training last year. We just, um, there were a group of teachers that also followed up with some training on the release day last week.
It's five full days of training, so.
Wow. That's good. It deserves that attention. Mr. Mannan?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm very encouraged, um, that we're, that we're doing this. I would actually, um, for a number of reasons. One is the, uh, the issue of depression and suicide is one that I think I've personally been concerned about, um, here in the schools. We've had a, a number of recent gr- We've had a number of recent graduates commit suicide over the last five or six years. So I think that this is really great. I also spent five years as an emergency mental health outreach worker doing suicide work. And it's, you know, it is something that you can train people to recognize and to deal with. So I'm really, really encouraged by that. And is there any way to get those videos up on the website? Would we have permission to put them on the website?
I don't know. I mean, they're copyrighted, so I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I could certainly find out.
I think of their own version of their own website that would be worth looking to.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, I think that any, those kinds of linkages, particularly around some initiatives that we're looking at for, you know, around mental health issues for kids, I think would be really useful to parents.
The one other thing that I want to talk with you about is, I don't know if you're familiar at all with this publication called District Administration, but I have been invited by District Administration. They are sponsoring a conference that is in Newport. It begins on Wednesday evening and it runs through Friday, and it's for superintendents, and it's by invitation only. And Randy Collins, who is the person who is, he is a former superintendent that I knew in Connecticut. And there are seventy superintendents who will be, who have been invited to this. What's very nice is that it is all expenses paid, and I'm really looking forward to it. They have a very, a very robust agenda and very, a lot of very current topics. And there are superintendents coming from all over the country. So it'll be, it'll be an opportunity.
Congratulations.
To get together and to hear what's happening in other parts of the country. And so I will be there Wednesday evening and then Thursday and Friday. I want you to be aware of that. And I think that is it from superintendent.
I wanted to go back to one thing. Our first topic forum, for some reason, it didn't get put on the agenda. So if you look at our school committee schedule, our first forum, topic forum, which is October twentieth, and it runs from six-thirty to eight P.M. And I would like to suggest that we hold the forum on the Common Core. I think there are so many questions out there that it deserves this kind of attention. And we were going to start with just math, and then the assistant superintendent felt that we could do both math and E.L.A. So that's going to be the topic of discussion on October twentieth in this room at six-thirty. So if you have questions that you would like to submit beforehand that we can work on, that we haven't already worked on, please feel free to do that. You can send them to me or, you know, a committee member.
I just want to comment too, that I think that it was particularly interesting that in the Globe Magazine on Sunday, there was an article on Common Core. And there also was in Globe North, there was a side-by-side, you know, yes and no columns that were in there. So I thought it was, this is a big topic right now.
Mr. DeGanter?
One of the ideas that we had developing the concept of the forums is that we would give people a whole variety of information on both sides of an issue for them to read and consider prior to the meeting, given that our website is not quite ready in order to be able to provide that. Can we make a list of appropriate links that come both sides of the Common Core discussion? And have the superintendent email that out to all parents as part of the invitation to the session?
And how are we going to publicize this session?
Well, I would suggest, you know, again, it's an initiative of the school committee. It's a topic that's very germane. I would suggest that we contact the Daily News. I'll go again.
Yes. I think, I think we want this topic to, you know, we want to give it all the press we can so that if people have, you know, questions, concerns, whatever, they can, they can talk with us.
I can also call them.
Yeah.
Right.
Susan, did you get a chance to pull up the report that they recommended at TeachPlus? Because you have the article in the Globe, in the magazine.
No, I have not yet.
Have you, did you?
I have, I have.
It was called the H, the Hekinger?
Hekinger Report.
I was curious because it was sort of, by TeachPlus was doing the countrywide professional development, it seems. And it seemed like it would be worth taking a look at that, but.
One of the things I thought was interesting about the Globe Magazine report was talking about, you know, forms of professional development and helping teachers get ready for implementing the Common Core. And it was really reassuring around the work, kinds of work that we're doing on our hands. And our aligned kinds of recommendations that are made for professional development that works. And so I thought, okay, I'm right. No, but I'll look that up.
Great. Mr. Cole?
Yeah, just relate to what you said about gathering links. I think it also would be helpful if you have some hard copy from those representative links available at this discussion piece, because frankly, there's just, there's just a lot of disconnect. For instance, in the two papers that were handed today, one from Ms. McCarthy, one from Ms. Bick, there's a statement on this one that says, pardon me if not, "See, see if implemented federalizes education and eliminates local control of education. Data collection incomes with significant costs." So it eliminates local control here. Number two says, "Is Common Core federal mandate that takes away local control?" It says, "No." So I think, you know, differences in opinion like that really need to get answered clearly. And if there's documentation that supports one or that refers to statute, I think it's going to be really helpful to have.
Did we ever find out who sponsored this forum? I've heard absolute negative comments about the one on Common Core. One of the presenters was let go from D E S E, that there was no, you know, sponsorship. There was no identification of who was actually putting this forward.
No, that was all announced there.
It was?
Yeah.
Who did sponsor it?
No, there was Essex G O P sponsored it. They were actually all there. And the woman was.
What does that stand for? Oh, oh, G O P. I thought you said J O P.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I thought you were saying something. And she didn't.
So this was a political agenda sponsored by?
No, I, well, I don't, no, I wouldn't call it political. I would call it that they were concerned and they sponsored it. The woman was not let go. She refused to sign off on it when she realized that it went, the Common Core standards went against brain development. That's what first hit her, and child development. And then when she started looking deeper as to how it would work in the classroom, she would not sign off on it. And she and another person on the board did not sign off, yeah. I have not heard any negative comments about it. I haven't heard much about it.
Something I've heard.
I mean, it was well-attended, but I haven't heard anything negative.
Okay. Well, we will continue our own forum to have.
We'll have a conversation, yeah.
Why we're going places and gathering information and trying to pull in on.
And, well, like you say, again, I think it's, and I know I've talked about this in the past, the importance of certain topics deserving, if you will, a public hearing, because public hearings are governed by specific rules of open meeting law, where you present documents for one opinion, you present documents for another opinion, and you let the people read those documents, or you present those documents as part of the hearing and then have a question and answer, whatever. I guess what I'm saying is, I think this really needs to be managed well so that both, both opinions, if you will, are heard. And I don't, you know, so I think it's important to have some structure as to how we're going to proceed through it.
Would you like to work on that, Committee?
Not really.
Well.
No, because I'm given these two things right here, and I see a quagmire from the start. So I'd be curious what other place to do, and that's why I refer to, I would if it was a public hearing. I would, because then I have a straight structure to use. But it's clear that you don't want a public hearing, or that it's not meant to be a public hearing.
Can I state one thing? And it might.
And any of my statements, no.
Yeah, no, not about that.
Nothing toward you. It's just, I find.
No. But in the big picture, it's, none of this is going to change for Massachusetts. Department of Ed Commissioner was on the board for Park. So for Massachusetts, it's not going to change unless Massachusetts someday is standing by themselves. May or may not happen. So I really think that, I think that there's an effort here, but I think some people feel like it's pretty, you know, going against the tide. So, you know, in no way do I believe at this point that anything's going to change. We're just going to go forward like we are. But it is interesting what is happening across the country.
Well, this, as it's stated here, and, you know, there's a large percentage of states that are dropping out.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
That's why we want to have some kind of a discussion for clarity. And the assistant superintendent is going to provide us with information as to what our curriculum here looks like vis-à-vis Common Core and the impact it's made kind of locally. Yes?
I think we need to be clear that this forum or this hearing, whatever format it takes, is really aimed more at allowing people to understand what Common Core is and how it's going to affect their children. I think it's not perfect, but it's also steps in the right direction. We need to understand that. It's not an either yay or nay type of issue, but really one of education so that as parents talk to the teachers, as parents talk to us, we can have an informed discussion about those issues. And that's what I would consider to be a successful event, is if people can put some of their emotions aside and say, "Oh, now I understand what this is all about," and have an educated discussion about it in such a way that we can tweak things that are tweakable, wink at things that are winkable, you know, whatever it is, and we're going to say, okay, we're not going to proceed on this particular aspect because it's not part of the culture of our community. But right now, we don't have the basis for any kind of that, any kind of discussion on those things. So that's what my hope would be, is conversation, is understanding. Then what we do with that understanding, I think, will play out over time.
Well said. Any other comment?
Just, I would ask, the suggestion was made by Steve that we provide links that, try to find some balance. And Audrey, can you help with making sure we can get some links? That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number, item number ten, subcommittee reports, joint ed met this evening for the first time in this school year. We also had a lengthy conversation there about the Common Core. We talked about the report that Mr. Lukens gave to us about the Chapter Seventy funding. Two of the counselors that are on the joint ed committee are also attended that coalition meeting. And the third thing on our agenda was, how are we doing with the school lunch program? So we did have a conversation about that a little bit in our finance committee meeting. And things are, we're serving more lunches per day. We are going to keep an eye on our food services. We are going to be looking at other districts and what they're doing and whether they're in the black or the red. So our contract, as you know, with Chartwell's is up at the end of this year, so we're keeping a close eye on our cost. Did you want to say anything else, Mr. Cole, about, from our finance committee meeting?
Well, I think we went over that in the last meeting.
Okay.
But pretty much, you know, the numbers are up, but there's not a whole lot of data in it. We're looking to have month-over-month data so we can look at how things look between last year and this year. But the expectation is that there'll be more sales, if you will, more students participating in lunch at the Brezner School as the year goes along, because lunch, lunch for younger students or students that age, they don't always get the routine right away, so they might be a little shy to it. But there's efforts being made. I know they had a, they had an effort there with some, what was some cartoon or?
Keep calling it the body. Who was the, who was the person?
It was a giant rabbit.
A giant rabbit.
So the rabbit came to sell down to help, help the lunch program. So they're trying all different things, but the numbers are also up at the NOAC too. So right now, things are looking good, but we'll see how those numbers translate in terms of profit or loss expense. Yeah. Month-over-month.
And we have the, the new lunch benches are in at the Brezner.
Yes, yeah.
You can, the kids are enjoying those a lot. It's like you're at Friendly's. I don't know, maybe I'm dating myself, but they have booths. Anything else you want to add about the finance committee?
Next meeting will be this Thursday, October ninth.
Thank you. Policy?
Policy hasn't met since last time. We've spent most of the week or so putting together the evaluation, the school committee evaluation. We're meeting in two weeks. And we'll be looking at several of the policies that we began to discuss communications, discipline.
Finger printing? Finger printing?
Yes, fingerprinting. We'll be looking at that as well.
And also use of facilities was another.
Use of facilities.
The policy committee is very busy. Are you, are we, are you, is the end goal for the policy committee to come out with a fingerprinting policy?
To come out with a fingerprinting policy from the school committee's perspective, yes. Yes.
And wouldn't that be the administrative or?
Well, the administrative, there's going to be administrative policy, but I think that we.
I, we went over that. And as I recall from our discussion, it was, again, we're only two, two members of the committee who were there. But I went through the rationale for it, and there didn't seem to be any concerns at that point. Now typically, just because I need to understand this, would you then send that to the entire school committee for a vote? Correct?
Yes, that's right.
So what I, what I guess I would like to see side-by-side somewhere is the state policy and our policy. And our policy highlighted the parts that aren't part of the state that we've added in for our own student protection. That's what I would like to see.
Policy.
Right, both of them. And then coming out of that, at the subcommittee, what policy we are going to adopt and vote for.
Well, that would be the school side with our policies proposed.
Correct. But I think I would like to, myself, to see the nuances of each. So I can just make a comparison from my own knowledge, because it's been a hot topic lately. So I just want to make sure that we're clear. Thank you. Curriculum instruction and accountability.
Yep, the last meeting had to be canceled. And so the next meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-first at five-thirty. We'll cover goals and expectations for that committee for the coming year.
Thank you. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, we haven't met as a committee yet because the superintendent was working on the district goals, wanted to bring them forward to this committee for feedback and input before we start to work on an action plan that follows that. So your feedback to the superintendent is important, and then we'll set up our first meeting to discuss. And then we'll disseminate back out. We'll, we'll report back out each time. Is there anything else? Mayor?
We need to move forward as the school committee and vote on the surplus of, in the closing of the Brown School, especially now that there's. Especially now that there's recreation services there, we haven't done that yet. That is totally separate from the adaptive reuse of the building, which the feasibility study is going on there. This is just strictly for the purposes of insurance liability, you know, more of a, a legal piece and the fact that it's not being used as a school anymore. According to the Mass School Building Authority, the requirement is a public hearing. So, that has to have a two-week notice and publication in the paper. So, that would take us beyond our next school committee meeting, which is good because we have a full agenda on the twentieth with Common Core. But that would bring us to November third. So, Susan, if you would be so kind as to, you know, make sure that your office publishes that and we set up a, you know, just a, a short public hearing on that topic. And after that, we would vote on turning it back over to the city. Yes?
Americans, the vice chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Menon.
Thank you. I would like to say, one of the things that I spoke about is overcrowding at the high school. We're not currently using the Brown School as an elementary school. And I think we are, I, I think I would like to have a conversation about whether or not the schools may still have a use for that building. We have, there's, there's a whole range of possible options. And I think it's incumbent on us, particularly again, when we're beginning to get into some situations where there's, there's overcrowding in our system, I want to have that conversation about whether the schools have absolutely no use for that building or not. And I, I'm, I'm interested in figuring out how to have that conversation, whether that's at, at hot group, whether that's a conversation that we have here. But I'm not, I, at this point, am not prepared to decommission that building as a school when we may still have some needs that we haven't discussed. I think we have an obligation to do that.
I agree.
So, we don't have the date of the public hearing yet? Or did I miss it? I'm sorry. I was suggesting that the November, um, third. Before the. Right, before. That, that Monday or was it, I think it's the third. No, because two, three is the fourth, so it would be the second. Right, would be the, um, or is it the third?
It is the third.
Okay. So, um, whether or not we start the conversation at that meeting?
Well, I'm not going to start a conversation, meeting and then take a vote.
I'm not asking you to, I'm saying we change the format then. That's.
Yep, I think.
Or get, have the public hearing just so that we get more, more information from the public. And then that doesn't necessarily mean we have to go into a school committee and take a vote either, Bruce.
No, and, and again, it's part of, you know, that was part of my hesitancy about saying, okay, well, we're going to get to work on the strategic plan in January. I think these are issues that are current. And, you know, while we have this building sitting there, while it is still part of our school system, let's have the conversation. So, I, I would prefer it to be part of the strategic plan, but I don't see weight.
I think there's, there's, there's possibility to have, to start the conversation in November. If we have the flexibility to go a little bit later in the year, after we've had the conversation, after we've done the research that we need to do. When do we all feel comfortable that this is the right thing to do, then take a vote? Are we, are we, any required schedule there?
I don't believe so. But I just, I'm, I'm having legal check on, you know, liability. You know, again, if it's not being used as a school, is this, is the school going to be liable in the event of an injury of a kid in the playground? I'm looking at our Maya coverage, all the, just those kinds of things, which I think are, are important to do. And if we have to carry some type of additional coverage in the interim while we make these decisions, so be it. But I just want to be sure that we are covered appropriately in the city.
If you could share that information with us, that would be really useful.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just one other quick thing that I wanted to share is that for those of you who were there as we opened the school year and Pat Levin mentioned about the challenge that the superintendent, just to add a little levity to our conversations, it's been very deep and intense tonight. Susan and I are in a, a walking challenge. And so, we will be receiving our pedometers on the fifteenth and decided that we would kick off the challenge with a cooking, a healthy lunch for each other. Actually, I hope to do french fries and burgers.
Burgers.
Burgers and, and as we, we kick off our challenge and at some point down the road, we are, are going to be shifting jobs for the day. I will be acting superintendent and she will be acting mayor. And just to, you know, sort of assess who walks more, win what, you know, kind of thing. And as we begin the six-week challenge. And then we'll have to come up with some ultimate, you know, the biggest loser kind of thing. So, anyway, just thought we, and you're all welcome. This is part of our healthy initiative, which helps keep our health insurance rate down. And so, would encourage all of you to step up and become part of this wellness initiative. Information is posted on our website and get involved.
And Susan's giving a large team behind.
Boo. Ooh, I didn't know that, okay then.
Or walking steps, you mean?
It's, it's only her pedometer that counts against mine, not the whole team.
Oh, dear.
Anyway.
My pedometer for sale.
Anyway.
We need to go into executive session.
We are going to have an executive session this evening for the purpose of collective bargaining for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent's contracts. We will not be coming back out into the public, so I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
Boo.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call, please. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeGanter?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Ms. Lukin?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.